August 20th meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and freedom of the free and just pronounced.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Olson, Counselor Van Sickle, Counselor Bender, he's excused, Counselor Sweeney, Counselor Fennessy, Counselor Elm, Counselor Ludwig, Counselor Sutherland, Counselor Kern, Counselor Dahlbeck, you, Counselor Newman.
We have a quorum. Counselor Bender is trying to call in. His phone doesn't seem to be working, so if he gets ahold of me some point during the meeting, we'll patch him in. Approval of the minutes. Motion is by Counselor Van Sickle, or I'm sorry, the motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item six is the consent agenda.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, the second by Counselor Sutherland. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 7.1 is the Finance Committee minutes from August 8th, 2019.
Motion is by Counselor Sutherland, second by Counselor Kern. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.1.
I'm sorry, just a minute. I might have Counselor Bender here. Counselor, can you hear me?
Hey, Jenny.
This is Jim.
Hey, Jim. I'm sorry, I couldn't get this to work except on FaceTime.
Okay, can you hear the meeting, Counselor? Counselor Bender, can you hear the meeting?
Yeah, I'm on now. It's tough to hear. I mean, it's a lot of noise.
Okay. We're gonna keep moving with the meeting. Please, can you say that again?
Yep. Item 8.1, City Clerk Colan is recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses.
The motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.2, City Clerk Colan is recommending approval of an application to amend the premise of a Class B liquor and beer license by the main club at 1217 Tower Avenue for a special event on August 30th through September 2nd.
The motion is by Counselor Elm, second by Counselor Sutherland. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.3, Fire Chief Panger is recommending approval to purchase two 2020 Chevy four-by-four commercial Tahos at a total cost of $73,204 through Ewald Automotive Group.
The motion is by Counselor Kern, second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.4, Human Resources Director Kenedzny is recommending approval confirming Ashley Poots to the Assistant Finance Director position.
Motion is by Counselor Ludwig, second by Counselor Sutherland. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries. Thank you, Counselors.
Item 8.5, Planning Director Cirque is submitting a report for the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Superior relating to the development agreement amount, the, that must be a typo there, the authority, F.I. Seltzer Company, Inc., N.R.K. Winter Street, LLC.
Motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, second by Counselor Fennessy to accept the report. Mr. Cirque, are we approving the actual agreement here?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion, second, is to approve the agreement. Is that clear, Counselors? Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 9.1, Mayor Payne is appointing Andrew Merritt to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Superior for a five-year term expiring August 2024.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, second by Counselor Ludwig. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 11.1 is a resolution of the City of Superior, Wisconsin, approving the report of the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Superior and a sign lease between the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Superior, Wisconsin and Lake Hood Constructors.
Motion is by Counselor Sutherland, second by Counselor Dahlbeck. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 11.2 is a resolution introduced by the Department of Planning and Development to authorize the submittal of a Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Initiative Grant Application to financially assist with the development of the downtown Cobblestone Hotel project.
The motion is by Counselor Elm. I didn't hear the second. The second is by Counselor Dahlbeck. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 11.3 is a resolution introduced by the Mayor's Commission on Communities of Color to recognize and celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day in place of Columbus Day.
Motion is by Counselor Olson, second by Counselor Bender. Counselor, just a little bit of background here. This comes, as it says, from the Mayor's Commission on Communities of Color, who, it's my understanding, wanted to see stronger language around the recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day. I would point out, there's no recognition of Columbus Day formally in the City of Superior, so this would formally just recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day and acknowledge the language in the form of this resolution that you see before you. Just as a, some background information, I've been issuing this proclamation, as a mayor's proclamation, the past two years, and the language of this resolution is taken directly from last year's proclamation. So what this does, it basically just joins your voice to mine when we celebrate the indigenous people of this place and of the country. Discussion on the resolution. We have a few people, members of the public, to speak on this. I'm sorry. Ms. Kim Young.
Good evening. I'm Kim Young. I live at C6 Aspen Court, and I'm the current Chair of the Commission on Communities of Color. And I'd like to say that the Northland region has been home to the Ojibwe people long before the first Europeans ever set foot upon this land. They never left it. They never ceded it to European peoples. They are the stewards of Getchigumi. Columbus brought pestilence, warfare, and slavery by conversion to our indigenous cousins, and it's time we recognize them for the 500-plus years of genocide they endured and the resilience they have shown. As a city wishing to live up to its name and do more than give face time towards diversity, the Commission on Communities of Color is asking the City of Superior to make it right. It's time to embrace our indigenous community as the true original owners of this land. This resolution is a step forward, and although it has become a progressive trend in many communities across the nation to enact such measures, it is more than that here. It's acknowledgement of the rich heritage and traditions of the first peoples of this community. And I really hope you will pass this to show that we are moving forward to include diversity in this community and not just as a front, but sincerely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm gonna call, this reads T. Leaper, and I neglected this before Ms. Young spoke. The members of the public that address the council will have three minutes and only three minutes accepting the pleasure of the council. And so that is a hard rule, and I will have to stop anybody that moves beyond the three minutes, but I'll warn you at about two and a half minutes. Please. I'm sorry, if you could hit the button, it's the second from last button on the right. There you go.
Okay. Hello, my name's T. Leaper, and I'm a citizen of the City of Superior, and I'm also identify as white. I think that's important, especially naming that, as I'm speaking upon this, as this is not my place to speak upon such issues, but to add voice to such issues in support of it. And I'd like to recognize and honor the Ojibwe people, the Anishinaabe people, the original peoples and caretakers of this land, who are here before us, who are here with us, and who will continue to be here. The reason why I say this is because I think it should be easy for all of us to say this and recognize who came before us and who is with us here today. I think a lot lately about being in good relation to others and being in good community with others. And as I think about this, it's time now, more than ever, to do what is right and to move forward, as Kim was just mentioning as well, in a positive direction, supporting those in community with us. As I think about this as well, it's important that we recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day, as we should be recognizing and honoring this day for those individuals who have been most impacted by colonization and the forced removal of people from lands and also the forced inhabitant of lands, especially those lands that we are on today, the Anishinaabe. So I just speak in favor today of recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day and moving forward, honoring that day as well, and I urge you to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, please, this reads Pat St. Germain.
My name is Pat St. Germain. I'm Elsie Ojibwe. I'm Native American. Been here for 72 years. I'm, I'll just pull it down here. Columbus Day is one of the 10 federal holidays recognized nationwide by the United States government. We must stop this, and we cannot keep honoring a legacy genocide of indigenous people. It's, we must rewrite, I think we must rewrite all the history books, because it's just false information to our children and to everyone here, I guess. That he came over, when he landed, he thought he was in India, not, you know, over here in the United States. So he abused a lot of natives over here, and when he landed, it was just, he landed over here, I think he was kicked out wherever he was, and everybody that came along with him were murderers and thieves, and so we just gotta change the name to Indigenous Day or Native Day. So I hope you think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to this issue? Counselors, is there further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 12.1 is an ordinance introduced by Counselor Van Sickle and Counselor Ludwig prohibiting the use of conversion therapy.
The motion is by Counselor Ludwig, second by Counselor Van Sickle. We have a number of members of the public that wish to speak on this, beginning with Pastor Bridget Jones. A reminder, three minutes, and three minutes only, and I will warn you at two minutes and 30 seconds.
Excuse me, Mayor Payne. I think, I believe I have the right to speak first.
You do, Counselor. Technically, according to Robert's rules, we traditionally allow the public to speak first. Would you like to exercise your privilege?
I would, yes, please.
Okay. Counselor Ludwig has the floor. Just a moment, Pastor.
Thank you. I could share with you all kinds of data about why conversion therapy is wrong for the young, vulnerable adults of our community and must be banned, but I will leave that for my husband and others to tell. Instead, I'm going to tell a personal story. A story about a young wife and mother who, 43 years ago this month, gave birth to a precious, beautiful baby girl. Since the young wife and her husband both came from large Catholic families, the baby grew up surrounded by many aunts, uncles, and cousins. The young child also grew up in an idyllic small-town neighborhood where she and her two younger siblings romped, played, and sometimes fought during long summer days with the other kids in the neighborhood. When the young girl reached her adolescent years, the mother started dreaming about what her daughter's adult life might be like. A college education, perhaps, followed by a good job, and a loving husband, and a couple of kids. However, the mother's dreams were altered when her college-age daughter came home one day with another young woman in tow and told her parents that she was gay and was currently dating the young woman who she'd brought home with her. Twenty-plus years later, I can still picture in my mind's eye with perfect clarity the exact thoughts running through my head the moment I learned my daughter was gay. My first thoughts were, oh my God, what are my mother and my siblings going to think of me having a gay daughter? Oh my God, how are her aunts, uncles, and cousins going to treat her? Will they treat her differently when they find out she's gay? Will they talk to us behind our backs? Oh my God, what are my friends and coworkers going to think of me having a gay daughter? Oh my God, how is society in general going to treat her? Will her life from now on be okay? Will our life from now on be okay? Because there are still societal prejudices against LGBTQs, I still worry about my daughter, but for the most part, my dream for my daughter's future did come true. She got that college education and a good job making over six figures a year. Only instead of a loving husband, she has a loving wife and two loving stepchildren and six loving step-grandchildren who now call her Grandma Tana. I thank God every day that in my family, love is definitely thicker than anything else, even societal and religious prejudices. My mother's siblings and close friends supported my daughter and I when we were at a vulnerable time in our lives. However, not everyone has such a good support system. Without that support system, they can fall victim to those who prey on their insecurities and need for acceptance. It is that segment of our population that this ban on conversion therapy is meant to protect. I didn't ask for my daughter to be gay. God and nature gave her to me and my husband that way, but I and my family love her fully and unconditionally for who she is, and it breaks my heart when others refuse to accept her differences, and it especially breaks my heart when those who have the power to do so refuse to or are afraid to enact protections for the vulnerable adolescents of today who were or are yet to be born gay, just like her. In a postscript, I called my daughter before this meeting to ask her permission to share this, and we ended our conversation with her saying, "I love you, Mom, and I'm so proud that you're doing this." Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to ask the members of the public to please refrain from any reaction to the speakers tonight. This could be an emotional debate, so let's try and get this in orderly fashion, please. Without further objections from the council, Pastor Jones, please.
Members of the council, I am Pastor Bridget Jones, pastor of Bethel Lutheran Church and ordained in the Evangelical Lutheran Church in America, the ELCA, and I am here to voice my support of the proposed ban on conversion therapy in the City of Superior. The Reverend Asher O'Callaghan, the first transgender pastor ordained in the ELCA, has said, and I'm excerpting here, "In the beginning, God created day and night, but have you ever seen a sunset, full of 100 shades of color you can't see in plain daylight or during the night? In the beginning, God created the land and the sea, but have you ever seen a beach, beautiful, a balanced oasis that's not quite like the ocean nor quite like the land? In the beginning, God also created male and female. In God's own image, God created them. So in the same way that God created realities in between, outside of, and beyond, night and day, land and sea, so God also created people with genders beyond male and female. Trans, non-binary, agender, and intersex, God created them from love, to love, and to be loved." He says to the community, "God is still creating you. You are no less beautiful and wild than a sunset or a beach. You are loved. You have a place here." When he says "you have a place here," he is talking about the church, but I want to live in a city where members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, plus all the other sexual and gender minority community believe that statement means that they have a place in the city they call home, that their queer identity is not something to be eliminated but a gift. I want people of all genders and sexualities to believe that they have a place in Superior. Banning conversion therapy would be a large step in that direction. Conversion therapy, reparative therapy, or any other sexual orientation change efforts are practices unsupported by the scientific, psychological, or medical communities. The American Psychological Association noted that conversion therapy is, quote, "unlikely to be successful and involves some risk of harm," end quote. The American Academy of Pediatrics says conversion therapy, quote, "can provoke guilt and anxiety while having little or no potential for achieving changes in orientation," end quote. The National Association of Social Workers says, quote, "No data demonstrate that reparative or conversion therapies are effective, and in fact, they may be harmful." I'm unable to stay for the rest of the meeting because my congregation is hosting an event with Harbor House Crisis Shelters to address the homelessness crisis in Superior tonight, but I knew that I had to come here as well because these issues are intertwined. Studies have shown that 40% of youth experiencing homelessness are members-
30 seconds, please, Pastor.
-are members of the LGBTQIA+ community even though they make up around 7% of the general population. These youth are already facing trauma in many other ways, from social stigma to family pressure. I ask that the City Council of Superior would do the right thing for these vulnerable members of our community and ban conversion therapy, a practice that is unbiblical, unsuccessful, unsafe, and should be unwelcome in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Pastor Will Mochon.
I'm from Pilgrim Lutheran Church, right down the road here on Bellknap Street. Sometimes people decide that other people are bad, or not as good, or wrong, or evil, or that they are broken and need to be fixed. Too often, this gets decided only on the basis of what people are when they are born. Then, people born in certain places are bad, or some men decide that women are inferior. People born with a certain skin color are less. People decide that others born with a sexual orientation different from their own are broken and need to get fixed. Many ways of abusing, punishing, and using people happen then just because people are born a certain way. Now, I understand that some religious people carefully select six infamous verses from the Bible to support their claim that being gay is wrong and needs fixing. Well, for anyone who quotes those six verses, I have a few other verses. For example, these verses insist that working on Sunday, wearing blended fabrics, eating shellfish, and a sassy high school kid all are punishable by death. Do you really want to go there? And if you won't go there, then don't insist on the six out-of-context verses either. Actually, the main powerful and good thread running throughout Scripture and Christianity insists that all people are created in the image of God, are created good and inherently deserving of respect and dignity. What is wrong is deciding that someone else is born wrong. Gay conversion therapy does that. As a religious leader, I ask you to not allow that in our city. I also speak as an American citizen. American government, at all levels, at its best, from its beginning, has said no to viewing and treating people as less because of the way they were born. Our founding document says that all are created equal with inalienable rights. Later, our government entered a civil war to say that selling, buying, and owning people because they were born with a certain skin color is wrong. Our government later passed laws saying that women are good enough to vote. Government at all levels passed and still passes laws that protect the civil rights of people after others have decided the way they were born isn't good enough. This good fight to protect our core values by protecting people occurs again and again.
30 seconds, please, Pastor.
It's occurring here tonight, and so I ask you, the Superior City Council, to stand in the best tradition of American government by passing the proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathleen Colhane.
Nice to meet you all for the first time. You I know. My name is Kathleen Colhane. I am a resident of the City of Superior. My wife and I just bought a house. We are here for the duration. I am, I'm an analytical chemist by training. I am a veteran. I am a parent, and I'm a woman of non-traditional origin. I was not born this fabulous. Before I go into my, what I really want to get to, I want to state, faith is important. Faith can move mountains. Faith can bring humanity together in a strong and powerful way when it's done right. As a parent, one has an immense instinct to protect their children, and I know that parents of faith seek to protect their children. But, as a scientist, to advance science, we have what are called peer review, peer-reviewed journals. In order to become a better scientist, to advance science, you have to write articles that have to be accepted by your peers. For hard sciences, that's pretty easy, because you can document that. You can do tests, you can do experiments. It's not so easy with psychology. The human psyche is a squishy science. We have professional societies that kind of take the place of peer-reviewed journals, and it is in our best interest to trust the professionals of those societies when they say, "This is not a good thing. This is a dangerous thing. You should not do this thing." And this thing, of course, is conversion therapy, reparative therapy. I fortunately never had that happen to me, and I'm very, very grateful, because I was confused enough growing up. It took me till my 30s to figure out what I was, because I didn't have the example. I didn't have someone who I could look to and say, "Oh, that makes sense now," until I was in my mid-30s. It would have been infinitely worse had I been subjected to some kind of a therapy like that. What we're talking about in this type of therapy is literally the extinction of self, the extinguishment of identity. That does irreparable and occasionally fatal harm, their story upon story upon story of youth that have taken their own lives or are otherwise miserable for a long, long time and eventually come out-
30 seconds, please.
-after many, many years of this damage. So just in conclusion, because I want to be very cognizant of our time, I implore you to vote with some conscience, to really think about your vote, and I implore you to vote in favor of this ordinance, to protect those who are vulnerable and can't yet speak for themselves. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Julia Johnson.
Hello. My name's Julia Johnson. My pronouns are they/them/their. I live on East 9th Street in Superior, and I have an interdisciplinary bachelor's degree in psychology, sociology, and gender studies. I'm the founder of the local LGBTQ2+ organization, Northland Prism. And to get a little Schoolhouse Rock on everybody for a minute, I just want to remind you that ordinances are intended to protect civil liberties and rights, establish standards, maintain order, and resolve disputes. So it's your role as the City Council to pass ordinances and govern the City of Superior. This is your wheelhouse. I'm here because it's every community member's responsibility to keep our community safe. So it's imperative that we support the conversion therapy ban. The American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry finds no evidence to support any therapeutic intervention based on the idea that a gender identity expression or sexual orientation is a disease. The American Psychiatric Association also opposes this and calls conversion therapy unethical. The SAMSA LGBT Affairs Special Expert concluded that these therapies are not effective, reinforce harmful gender stereotypes, and are not appropriate mental health treatments. According to a University of California researcher, suicide is not caused by LGBT identity, but rather by how the world reacts to their identity. The American Psychological Association's Government Relations Director stated that conversion therapy harms self-esteem and sets off depression, anxiety, suicidal thoughts, substance abuse, and risky sexual behaviors. In a study of 245 LGBT youth, youth whose parents tried to change their sexual orientation, attempted suicide at a rate three times higher than those who did not. Harvard Medical School's Dr. Jack Turbin noted that when parents enlisted conversion therapists or religious leaders to try and change their child's sexual orientation, it increased the risk of suicide fivefold. Your constituents are here. They're watching you, and they elected you because they trust you to represent them with integrity and grit. Please vote to protect Superior residents. Vote to ban conversion therapy. Now's your time to shine, counselors. We're counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Victor St. George, please.
My name is Victor St. George. I'm the pastor of Zion Lutheran Church on East 2nd Street, and I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance. In 1981, I got a phone call from my brother Jim, who was hospitalized following a suicide attempt. A few months later, we had a chance to sit down and talk, and he explained to me that he finally recognized and admitted that he was gay. He and I were raised in a very fundamentalist congregation who taught us that being gay meant that you were unworthy of- meant that you were unworthy of God's love and unworthy of human respect. His suicide attempt was a result of being told from the time he was young that there was something desperately wrong with him. Unable to stop being who he is, he felt at the time that he couldn't let down his family by being true to himself. I'm happy to report that he is alive, accepting of himself, and living a peaceful life in New York with his husband Mark. The basis for conversion therapy is the brutal lie that there is something wrong with gay and lesbian people. This lie is supported primarily by people who claim to be Christian, picking out a handful of the 31,102 verses in the Bible that support this belief. There are far more verses addressing the sin of gluttony, but no one has attempted to kidnap me and force me into a therapeutic setting to shame me into eating better or exercising more. Two things should be understood about conversion therapy. The first thing is there is not a single accepted scientific study that shows it to be effective. It just plain doesn't work. Second, it is harmful to those who have been forced into it. In 2009, the American Psychological Association issued a report concluding that the reported risks of conversion therapy include depression, guilt, helplessness, hopelessness, shame, social withdrawal, suicidality, substance abuse, stress, disappointment, self-blame, decreased self-esteem and authenticity to others, increased self-hatred, and so on, and so on, and so on, and the risks are even greater for youth who are forced into it. My faith tells me that I am to love my neighbor. I cannot love my neighbor and at the same time do him or her harm.
Thirty seconds, please Pastor.
One of the primary functions of government is to protect its citizens. Please take this opportunity to let all of your citizens know that they are valued and protected. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor. Bob Janson, please.
Good evening. I'm the token capitalist for the evening. And hopefully you'll stick with me for the next three minutes down this yellow brick road. I have both my bachelor's and master's from UWS. And in the past year, I was voted one of the top 25 alumni from the Alumni Association. I taught in California, Cal State, and I taught scholastical for seven years until a new college president came in and fired me because I was gay. So at that time, I opened the main club. And so I'd like to talk a little about the people and the things that we did as a community in regards to the main club. We had fundraisers for AIDS. We established a police relations liaison officer. We had pride. And one of the things that I found interesting is people from Twin Cities loved coming up here because they could park their car in the Android parking lot and spend three days up here enjoying the city of Superior, going to restaurants, going to the bar, and just enjoying our town and our city. I forgot one thing, and I opened the bar in 1983. In 1982, Wisconsin was the first state to pass the Human Rights Ordinance of Nondiscrimination, the first one in the country, and we should all be very proud of that. One of the things that I have found about the gay and lesbian and bisexual transgender and all the diverse communities is that we have a third gay eye, that when we think about things, we think about not only the things in our community and ourselves, but we have the whole other side of the community to work in. The best people have a description of this are the Native community, and I'm very proud to be here with some of those tonight because they refer to the gay people as two spirits. They live in two worlds. They live in, and please forgive me as a white person, I don't maybe explain this the best, but they live both in a male and female world. And those things together make a very interesting person that makes it creative. Several years ago, there was a Florida model, not the state, but a person, who said that in a city, the amount of creativity that is provided, that will bring business. Instead of doing business like a hotel on an island or an airport factory or something, if you have a quality of life that is good and lets creative people come and foster, the other things will come and be there. In summary, I'm again glad that the Native community is here because we have seen how they were destroyed. They lost their
Thirty seconds, please.
They lost their feelings, they lost all the things that were important to them because white people came in and tried to change them. And now we see the Christian community, not the good ones, the bad ones, coming in and trying to destroy this third eye, this creativity that we have in our gay community. Thank you. I missed the band coming in in the last thirty seconds.
Next time, sir. Next, Eleni Pino, please.
Hello, my name is Eleni Pino. I'm currently the president of the Board of Directors of NAMI Douglas County, and in my day job, I'm a professor of psychology over at UWS. As the local affiliate of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI Douglas County is part of the largest grassroots mental health organization dedicated to building better lives for people affected by mental illness. We accomplish this mission at a variety of levels, through working with people, through working with individuals whose lives have been touched directly or indirectly by mental illness, advocating policy changes that will improve people's quality of life, and working to eradicate harmful stigmas around mental illness. One important aspect of our work at NAMI is advocating for access to evidence-based mental health treatments. There are two pieces of that sentence that are important for the proposed ordinance. First, and most importantly, members of the LGBTQIA+ community, just by virtue of not being heterosexual or gender-conforming, do not have a mental illness. Being queer is not a mental illness or a defect. It does not need to be fixed. This is the consensus within the psychological and psychiatric community and has been clearly articulated in diagnostic manuals used by practitioners since 1974. Secondly, NAMI only encourages evidence-based treatments for mental illness. That is, we support only treatments that have been rigorously and scientifically tested to improve the symptoms of a mental illness. These are treatments like cognitive behavioral therapy, dialectical behavioral therapy, FDA-approved psychiatric medicines, and several unique programs developed by NAMI. Conversion therapy is not a therapeutic best practice or evidence-based. There is no credible evidence to show that conversion therapy actually can change an individual's sexual orientation or gender identity. In fact, cases have shown us it leads to more confusion, anxiety, depression, gender dysphoria, and even suicidal ideation and attempts. This is not new information. For 21 years, the American Psychiatric Association has spoken against conversion therapy. NAMI Douglas County joins the American Psychiatric Association, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and the American Psychological Association in a call to end conversion therapy in youth. We applaud the proposed ordinance as a step towards this goal. Members of the council, you have the ability to protect citizens from the harm that conversion therapy inflicts. Please protect your friends, neighbors, and constituents.
Thank you. Cheryl, I'm sorry, I can't read the last name?
Hager.
Hager, thank you. Cheryl Hager.
Hello, my name is Cheryl, and I started writing notes today, and I thought, nope, I'm going to speak directly from the heart. I have two children. One of them has a doctorate of law degree. The other one is a CFO of a company in the area. You can guess which one is gay and which one is straight. They're both very successful. I started off this journey when my son came out as gay. It was horrifying, like you were talking about. It was horrible. I wouldn't order books in my own name, but I wanted to learn. And I come from a very heavy evangelical background. It totally flipped my world upside down. But what I came to understand is, after spending a lot of time at the main club, meeting people, listening to people, reading books, that I think I was misled the majority of my life. Had I taken the route I was thinking about, which wasn't conversion therapy at the time when my child came out to me 16 years ago, who knows where we would be? I will tell you this, I am extremely blessed to have both of them, and I couldn't have asked for more. So, I'm just so against this. I've had the opportunity to do some activism work with one of my kids. We've been a few places, including being invited personally to meet President Obama at the White House, which we did do because my son was given an award at that time for his activism work in the LGBT community. And the friends I have met that have been lasting friends for me are those that I have currently in the gay community. The friends I had in church after we were kicked out of our church because we weren't welcome due to having a gay child, and now I'm going to cry, and I don't want to do that. I haven't been back to church since, and I always have said they could take religion away, they cannot take God away from me because the Jesus that I believe in is not what's being taught. I'm so strongly against this therapy. It just eats at my bones.
Thirty seconds, please.
So I've seen kids kicked out of their homes at 12, 13, 14 years old because they came out as gay and just left on the streets, all in the name of religion. And that's just wrong. So I really hope you consider and take a look at people's lives, especially those of our young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Smith Johnson, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Smith Johnson. I reside at 1303 East Third Street in Superior. I teach special education, birth to 21, for almost 30 years in a neighboring school district with over 8,000 students from different backgrounds, religions, and sexual orientation. I'm also a school board member in Superior and am not speaking or representing the board with my opinion. I'm speaking in favor of the ordinance to ban conversion therapy of children ages 18 and under. As a teacher, I am very careful of the words I use, the curriculum I teach, and how I convey information to children. The term "conversion and therapy" is a scary phrase to me. It combines "therapy," which is intended to support a person's well-being, and "conversion," which implies brainwashing. Educators do indoctrinate when we teach specific skills that must be used all the time, like safety in sports, science labs, and learning English for the first time. Why do we need this ordinance? We need to join other communities like Eau Claire, Racine, Madison, Milwaukee, to send a message to our state legislators that we intend to monitor our practitioners against dangerous, uninformed discriminatory practices. Yes, we shouldn't have to make an ordinance like this, just like we shouldn't have to have active shooter drills in schools. I've been to at least 30 of those. Well, here we are. We shouldn't have to make laws to protect children from discrimination in schools, but here we are. Conversion therapy, for whom and why? First, it's the LGBTQ community, then it's the people we don't like, then it's us. This is a position. Take a position. Assure that our youth are not brainwashed behind closed doors in Superior. Thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy Walden, please.
Hello, my name's Dorothy Walden, and my pronouns are she/her/hers. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the council this evening. I'm here as an advocate for children and as a proud, very proud mama bear. I live in Duluth. I was born and raised in Superior and lived here most of my life. I raised my child here. I urge you to vote on and support the ban on conversion therapy. The evidence is clear. Conversion therapy harms children. It is bigotry. This is about respect, respect for your neighbors. You have an opportunity to join other great communities in Wisconsin in protecting children and stating clearly that you will not allow this damage to be done in your community. It is an important opportunity. I'm so glad my hometown, through you, the council, has this chance to make a statement to the world, and most of all to our children, that we see you, we respect you, and you are safe to live your truth here. This issue is relevant to you as local leaders. Change begins at the local level. A great leader said, "Be the change you want to see in the world. Act now as leaders. Make it clear that Superior is a welcoming community and offer a message of hope and acceptance to Superior's young people." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. John Ludwig.
My name is John Ludwig. I'm a resident of Superior here and a proud husband of Councilor Ludwig. I guess I've listened to a lot of what people have said tonight already. I'm not going to try to repeat much of it, but I probably will. But the one thing I do want to address that probably doesn't get addressed much is the some of the things that come with the dynamics of our city and our city leaders and the people that live in our city when it comes to dealing with the issues, GLBTQ people. And the one thing I'm going to address is fear. Fear is a big thing that it's almost impossible for a lot of people to overcome. And as you heard my wife talk about when our daughter came out, even though we'd had businesses with gay gentlemen prior to that when they were growing up, and our kids knew that we were very receptive of GLBTQ people, she was still afraid to come to us and really speak to us for years. I mean, I remember after she came out, the first thing when my wife told me what she said is because of the fact that when she was around 16, I had already started to suspect she had issues that she had a different gender orientation than what most people thought. But that was at 16. When she was 22, and I found out that she came out to my wife, the first thing I said in my mind was, "What took her so long?" The next thing is, is the fact that when you're a parent, and you know, we have a lot of gay people here, but there's a few parents, but when you're a parent of a gay child and your child comes out to you, I mean, how many of you know all the standard practices for counseling and for therapy and all what is approved and what isn't approved? Hardly anybody, if you're not working in a field, knows what's good and what's bad. So, when your child comes out to you, you're
Thirty seconds, please.
...really fearing for what's going to happen and how they're going to deal with it. And the problem is peer pressure. And even though I know a lot of you, when you heard about this today, or this week, about this issue, you're suffering from problems with how to deal with the peer pressure you're going to have to deal with with some constituents. Now, the reason we're here is because in the state of Wisconsin
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. I'm sorry, your time's up.
Motion to let him finish.
Second. Sir, objection? Continue, Mr. Ludwig.
The reason we're here is because in the state of Wisconsin, over two years ago, they created bills in our legislature to ban therapy like this, conversion therapy. The problem is, it's been sitting and sitting in our state for years, nobody wants to take action. Why is that? Because of the fear of our legislature to make and take a position on something that isn't about gays or approving gays or not approving gay, lesbian, transgender, queer people, but it's the fear that because it's talking about an issue that's related to them, that they're approving or disapproving something, and it may look to their peers that they are doing that. So we had legislatures that don't have the courage to pass the bill. And some of you may think, and I've heard other people on social media saying that, why is the city of Superior doing this? What has it got to do with us? Well, it's got to do with the fact that the state of Wisconsin has not taken issue. Well, it's got to do with the fact that the state of Wisconsin has not taken issue, our county hasn't taken issue, very few places in our region have taken issue. And it's very important to our region and our city. Because it costs us money in the long run when we start looking at things like the results of what happens when kids are subjected to this. Things like the number of suicides increase, the problems with depression, homelessness. How many kids end up homeless? A lot of them are because they've been kicked out of the house. What happens after that? They become vulnerable to drug abuse, to being exploited, things like, sexual type things like, what do they call it? I'm trying to think of the term.
Sex trafficking.
Sex trafficking. That costs people in our community a lot of money, even though a lot of people don't want to admit that it's happening. And that's something that we need to really realize when we're looking at this. Some of you may think, well, this is just something that we shouldn't have to deal with. But those same people, I think, are really concerned about what our taxpayers pay for. And it's going to cost us money if we don't try to prevent this. Because if you had a doctor come to our community who was practicing medicine and using techniques that have been totally proven to be not functional or dangerous to their patients, wouldn't you want to put a ban on that and try to keep them from happening, even though some other level of government doesn't do it? You, you need to do it. And that's what you need to do with this today. Because it's, it's not only damaging to our children, but it's allowing our families to be exploited, not only the children, but some of the parents who don't know how to deal with the issues and are subject to unscrupulous people who come in and try to talk these people into using this type of therapy. And we don't want that. It's not good for us. And it's, it's very important to our community that we, we protect them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Gardner Moffett, please.
Good evening, I'm Gardner Moffett. I live at 1508 East Sixth Street. I'm here tonight with my daughter. She wanted to come up and watch and my wife's here as well. I didn't have a chance to really prepare comments, but I've been thinking about what everybody else said this evening and I was thinking earlier about, about my daughter's situation and she's lucky enough to live sometimes here in Superior with my wife and I, and sometimes in St. Cloud with her mom and stepfather there. And so I kind of thought to myself a little bit about how I grew up in a single-parent household and it was challenging. Thank goodness there was the Boys and Girls Club and so I had a positive male role model in my life as well. But I thought that in some ways my daughter is lucky because she has two sets of parents and so she kind of gets this experience of like learning things from all four parents and that's kind of cool. And she also has eight grandparents. And if you can think as a kid, like how awesome that is, that's awesome. Anyway, the point that I'm making is, it, it really takes a lot of adults to raise our children and they look up to adults, they look up to their teachers, they look up to their pastors, they look up to uncles and aunts and grandparents and everybody here. And I know that a lot of you either have kids or you have grandchildren and there are children that look up to you when you go places and, and look at you to be an example. And then I, I think about conversion therapy and putting these, these children that count on us and they look up to us for advice and to learn and, and to learn their morals and to learn how to set their, their ballast and so they can be productive adults later. And just the idea of putting a child in a room with an adult who tells them they're not good enough and tells them that who they are isn't okay, it, it just really breaks me up, you know? Like, I don't know how we could do that with children in our community. And I don't think there's any way to mince words here. It's, it's not, it's not harmful, it's not, some of the other terms people are using, it's child abuse. It's child abuse, you know? The idea of putting a small child in a room and having an adult tell them for an hour every week or however often they do this, that they're not good enough and who they are isn't okay, it's wrong. And so I'm asking you to stand up for the ban tonight and stand up for the children in our community, some of whom don't have enough positive role models in their life and they're looking to find that positive role model anywhere they can. Please be that role model tonight and please stand up for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Hager, please.
Good evening, my name is Justin Hager. I'm a resident of 1822 Missouri Avenue in Councilman Sutherland's district. I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight and thank the council members that have taken the time to speak with me throughout this week. I am a former small business owner here in Superior, am an attendee and graduate of Superior High School where I helped found the Gay Straight Alliance there 15 years ago. And 16 years ago, almost to the day, was honored to receive this certificate of appointment as the very first youth representative to sit in that seat in this, at the time, brand-new room. It has aged well, it's beautiful. I've mentioned those three things because hearing from all of the beautiful people out here tonight, all of the wonderful people speaking, you might get the impression that conversion therapy isn't a problem in this district, in this city. I can tell you that it is. As someone who went to Superior High School and founded that Gay Straight Alliance, I can tell you that a person in that high school, someone in a professional position whose job it was to protect me, advocated for me to go to conversion therapy and told me I would be better off dead than to be gay. I can tell you that as a city council member, as a youth representative on this council, a person on this council, an adult person on this council, who is no longer here, I'll give you all the clear, an adult person on this council looked at me as a 17-year-old and said, "I just really hope that you can be cured because if not, I'm going to have to pray that you die." That was said to me in this room, in this space. I'm so proud to see the pastors that are here tonight, but I can tell you that at my church where I helped found a youth group, you heard from my mother earlier, when we were summarily dismissed from our church, ushered out in front of the congregation because we were told that we were not good enough, simply because I am a man who loves another man. That's my crime. I'm a business owner, I've served my community, I attended law school. I think I'm a pretty decent person. There might be some people who disagree. But I think I've earned the right to exist in a world where I don't get told that I am not worthy. And yet at the end of this, what I will say is that I am still the lucky one. I had the chance to share with Councilor Sutherland earlier today, my friend Sam's story, and I'll sum it up in one sentence. Sam, at the age of 14, was strapped to a gurney, had ice water poured over his body, and then was hooked up to electrodes while he was forced to look at images of men holding hands in the hope that he would be, that he would associate same-sex attraction with torture and pain. Please don't sit on your hands and let that happen here. Take the chance to do this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Representative Nick Melroy, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I don't know what to say after that testimony. That is why we are here. I am sorry that that happened to you in our community, it's absolutely shameful. I have the honor of serving on this city council and I know you all have a very difficult job to do. It's, it's difficult, it's more difficult to serve on a city council than anything else because the people who are scrutinizing your decisions are your friends, they're your neighbors, they're your family, they're your faith leaders, they're business people. We had Kathleen tell her story of moving up here from the Twin Cities. She helps run one of the most successful businesses in this town. She would probably not have moved here if something like this were to be voted down. And that's why I am here tonight. I, I have always felt that the most important responsibility of government is to protect its citizens. And what could be more important than protecting kids in our community? We have an obligation to stand up for young men like the young man who just spoke so that things like this never happen again in our community. And I implore you to keep Superior moving in a forward direction, keep the good name that we have, show the kids of our community that we are, we are compassionate and inclusive and we will not stand for this sort of child abuse in our community. I thank you for bringing this up tonight and I certainly hope that all of you will support this, this ordinance. I think it would be a shame for this to be referred to committee. I think it would be a shame for this to come back in some resolution form. It is very important for government, for elected officials, to protect their citizens. That's why we have fire departments and police departments. It's why we spend so much money on things like public safety. This is part of public safety. There's studies, you've heard of the studies, there was a study that just came out a few days ago that showed that over 200,000 trans people have gone through this sort of torture. That's one in seven trans people.
Thirty seconds, please, Assemblyman.
People who have gone through this sort of therapy are 3.5 times more likely to do drugs, to be addicted to drugs, and they're eight and a half times more likely to commit suicide. Let's stand up for kids in our community and do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblyman. T. Leeper, again, please.
So the only person I've shared this with tonight is my mom, whose first words to me were, "That's amazing and I'm so proud of you kiddo." So my name is T. Leeper. I'm the coordinator of Gender and Sexuality Programs over at the University of Wisconsin Superior. But I, but tonight I speak to you as a concerned citizen of the city of Superior. While I could tell you about the research that has shown the ineffectiveness of conversion therapy or convey to you the trauma, physical torture, and damage to those that I know who have experienced such treatment, I think that our community has already done that well enough. I want to let you know this. Now is the time to act, not when something has happened and it's too late to change the course, but now as we are considering this ordinance and the protections it offers people of this city. As someone invested in seeing the well-being and betterment of all individuals, as a queer citizen myself, I know all too well how inaction affects people. I know the challenges that come from living authentically. And while I know that these challenges and these issues often come from outdated ideologies and perspectives, they also come from gray areas and lack of policy. As individuals of the city who have the power to set policy and guide operations of Superior, it is within your abilities and your duties to help set the precedence of who we want to be and who we are. Through establishing the ordinance of banning conversion therapy, you ensure we are living up to our city's mission, especially those aspects of providing a safe community to live, work, and play, as well as fostering a climate of community and respect for those here. I want to live in a city that stands behind these ideals, as I'm sure all of you do as well. By enacting this ordinance, you send the powerful message that acts of torture like conversion therapy do not belong and have no place in our city. Through establishing those clear and distinct expectations, you also send the message that we support all citizens. Most importantly, our youth and their chance to thrive and live their best lives. As I've already mentioned, the time is now. It's not tomorrow, not a month from now, but tonight, as city representatives, to vote in favor of this ordinance and send a clear message that our city lives up to our name, that all individuals are welcomed and supported here and that we truly are superior. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I can't read the next name. It's, the house address is 2202?
Oh, Christine.
Oh, hey, Christine.
Hi, my name is Christine Olson. And I live in Billings Park with my family. We, I'm also a full-time stay-at-home parent and a member of Socialist Action. I am fully in support of banning this horrible conversion therapy and I'm very glad that this is becoming an issue and is being talked about in our community. And I really hope that all of us become healthier and more aware and educated because of this being brought to an issue. And everyone has spoken very well and I'm very proud to listen to this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Kentop, please.
Hello, good evening, Council. My name is Christina Kentop. I'm a lifelong resident of Superior. I am also served on the Superior School Board for the past 17 years. Again, I am not here speaking on behalf of the Superior School Board, I am speaking on my own individuality. The Superior School District has administered the Youth Risk Behavior Survey for over 10 years at the senior high level. This assessment monitors health risks, behaviors, and of the nations of our, of our high school students. We use this assessment to inform us of areas that we need support within our student population. Our data has revealed that mental health issues, just in the past year alone, have tripled. We also keep tabs on our grades ninth, 10th, and 11th, and their, their needs, their mental health needs have also tripled. We know that an increasing number of students at our high school have missed 15 more days of school, which is considered truant, which we sometimes ask for help from the city attorney looking for those kids. We know that 100 students at the high school have been identified as having anxiety and missing between 25 and 30 days of school. We also know that members of the LG, LBGTQ are at a much higher risk, especially when rejected by their parents. We know that eight times, they are eight times more likely to attempt suicide, six times more likely to report high levels of depression, three times more likely to use illegal drugs, and three times more likely to be at high risk for HIV and STDs. Beyond the cost of what conversion therapy does to the human spirit, at what cost does that do to our community? I know firsthand what that cost was at the high school when we buried two students in less than a year to suicide. Conversion therapy is dangerous and it is discredited. It is falsely claimed that you can change a person's orientation and these practices have been rejected by every mainstream medical and mental health organization for decades. It's discriminatory and it targets our most vulnerable youth. Studies shows that this can lead to depression, anxiety, drug use, homelessness, and suicide, and we must take a stand against such harmful and demeaning practices. There is clear evidence that this is dangerous and ineffective. The American Academy of Child Adolescence Psychiatry, the American Academy of Pediatrics, Association for Marriage and Family Therapy, American College of Physicians, American Counseling Association, American Medical Association, American Psychiatric Association, the American Psychoanalytic Association
Thirty seconds, please.
The American School Counselor Association and the American School Health Association, those are just the As. Those are just the As. I implore you to please put people over politics tonight and do what is morally right and protect the youth of our children, no matter whom they love. This is not a hard decision, this is an easy win. It says a lot about a community when you protect those that are most vulnerable.
Thank you.
I am a mother of four and I love you all. And if anybody needs a hug if they've been rejected by their parents, I give really good hugs.
Thank you, Representative Kentop. We have no further, oh, I'm sorry, we do have one more, a few more, I'm sorry, Carol Peterson.
I'm a wife and I'm, I'm a mother and I'm a nurse. For over 100 years, court precedent precedent has established that parents should be responsible for making decisions for their own children unless proven unfit to do so, unless they're not fit to do that. And we want to respect family structure and parents' responsibility to care for their kids. The proposed ordinance of banning conversion therapy for those under 18 strips the parents of their moral obligation. of their moral obligation. And some say it's unlawful. Superior families celebrate who they are, and we can be trusted to choose proper care for a child in distress without an ordinance that may cause extra stress on the family unit, that's financially and emotionally, because, you know, let's face it, we don't have a lot of money here, and fines and bans and so on are stressful. Americans like minimal government controls. That's the other thing. There are many superior families suffering with drug and alcohol addictions. We got a lot of alcohol and drug addictions here in town, and many of our brightest and best young people have fallen prey to this epidemic. And some of these kids have died of their addictions. That's the opioid epidemic. It's very serious. I know firsthand drug trafficking is rampant at the Mariner Mall, because I walked there. And I've watched these little drug things going on, and the police are called, but they, the law enforcement says there's little they can do. I don't know if that's true. I don't know. Maybe that's something City Council can help with, I don't know. But human and child sex trafficking is also happening in town. And predators are grooming children for sex here in town, and usually the parents don't know, because both parents are working, you know? And I'd love to know what City Council is doing about all that, you know? To me, we want our kids to enjoy their childhood without bringing society's sexual issues into their lives. Let's let our kids enjoy their childhood and just be kids having good, clean fun. That's where I think our emphasis should be. That's our goal. You know, I saw on TV the other night, superior psychologists saying that the conversion therapy is passe, it's no longer used. So in other words, we don't need the law. But, you know, in my opinion, we need to focus on protecting our young people from drug traffickers.
Motion to let her finish.
Sex traffickers and all addictions, as well as predators grooming kids for sex. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we have Joan Medlin.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. I'm Joan Medlin, 1,100 weeks, Superior. I have lived here all my whole life, born and raised here, now a great-grandma, and I support the points made by Carol Peterson. I'm not here to take issue with the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender community. I empathize with their stories. I don't like what's happened to them in their lives, but two words came up in my mind when I read this ordinance, and I went, "Oh, ban and fine." And I'm just asking, can you consider the implications from those two words alone to the whole of Superior, Wisconsin? That's huge, if you would really sit and think about those two words. Also, I support her views on parental rights being ignored, not acknowledged. That is very serious and could bring lawsuits. There are, there are voices that are not here tonight, other parents in the city of Superior, grandparents, that will be very upset with a ban. And I don't know how much you really have studied this out for the whole of the community. And like I said, I am not coming against anybody's sexual orientation. I believe there's enough help out there for all of us. I just am asking you to really not do this. Consider parental rights in the city of Superior. And, you know, this is one consolidated voice for the ban, but there is, I can guarantee you, another voice out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mina Kaiser. I'm from Duluth, actually. I'm a guest here, but I have taught at the university for 25 years in the past. I don't anymore. I would like to start just by saying, everyone here would agree, parents should love their children. I can't imagine anyone saying they wouldn't agree with that. And within that, even if you're not a parent, that you should love children. I think everyone would agree with that, too. And within that, do no harm to your children, or anyone's children, right? I think we all agree with that. Conversion therapy does harm. You've heard many, many examples of how it is condemned by every reputable medical organization essentially on the planet. Just in the United States, more than four dozen organizations, like have been mentioned, have condemned it publicly, and it's not opinion, it's research, it's data, it's statistics. So it makes the most sense to ban something that harms children. We all love children, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I have nobody else signed up to speak. Would anybody else like to address the council? If there's anybody else that plans to address the council, would you please stand? The rules of three minutes will still apply. Please, come forward and state your name, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Kathy Herms. My pronouns are she, her, they, them. I work in Duluth for Lutheran Social Service. I'm attached to youth programming there, and one of the groups I work with is called Together for Youth, and that's a social support group for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, allied, intersex, two-spirit, and all kinds of other normally and beautifully identified young people. In the past eight years of spending time with these young people, I've learned some things about them and from them, and first and foremost, they are normal and beautiful for their gender identities, their sexual identities, and their gender expressions. I mean, they need some things from us. They need to be held as significant members of our communities. We need to note them, affirm them, and help them fill space amongst us. Second, they belong to have a full presence in school, in their church communities, in workplaces, if they hold jobs, and in our communities in general. They really need to have that presence untampered with. We need to allow them to be who they are, as they are. And third, what they need from us is safety, certainly physical safety, but emotional safety, psychological safety, and spiritual safety as well. I've also learned that they have some gifts for us, too. They have gifts for adults, many gifts, and I'll just mention two. One of them is words, vocabulary. Young people have offered up words that we can use with one another, about one another, that affords respect to people who have always been here, who are here today, and who will continue to be here. Many of those words were used this evening by people in the audience. That's a gift from younger people. And the second gift that we are offered is modeled behavior, of how to spend time with one another across all kinds of identities, spend that time productively, get things done, and like each other enough that we want to come back together and get some more done. So I would urge you to pass this ban on conversion therapy, and in so doing, open up safe space for our young people, so they can continue to bear those gifts forward to us and rise to be full, strong community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council?
I would.
Please state your name.
My name is Catherine Haga, and I live at 1600 Catlin Ave. I am lucky to be a heterosexual female. I haven't had to go through the struggle of being homosexual in a part of the LGBTQ community, but I'm here to stand up for them. I don't think conversion therapy is right. I think it's wrong, and I think it's child abuse. It wasn't long ago, about two years ago, I was a child myself, and I wouldn't want anyone to go through this. It is, it's tragic. Why, why would we let a parent do this to their child? Come on! It's wrong! I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. I haven't spoken in front of the city council before, but I want to support these guys. You guys are amazing, and you're strong, and you're warriors, and you need to keep fighting. It's right, and I want to be here to do that with you guys, so that's why I'm here, and you made me all cry today. You're strong. Thank you, guys, for being you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Please. If anybody else wishes to address the council, would you please stand and form a line? Then this will, this will be our last speaker.
Hello? Do I press the button?
Nope, you're good.
My name's Nicholas Ziem. Got a little bit emotional listening to people talking. Oh, I live in 3017 Heven Avenue, Superior, I think Warren Bender's district. I got a little emotional listening to people tell their stories. I guess I'm just trying to figure out why I connected, because I'm a heterosexual male. I'm not a part of that community, and I've spent some time thinking about it, and I think it's the alienation, the feeling of alienation in the community, not being a part of the community. Hearing religious leaders be true to their religion also helped me get kind of emotional. But I'm also a scientist, and though I'm not a psychologist, I am very aware that conversion therapy is not a valid psychological practice, that there is statistical evidence to substantiate that it doesn't work. I'm not, I'm not aware of how it's done, and so I don't know the, how bad it could be. I don't know how abusive it can be, but I know it doesn't work. So there is a good reason to actually, to move against such a policy. So I guess I have nothing more to say, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments. We have a motion to second for discussion by council. Councilor Van Sickle.
This ordinance was, was brought forward because there are real victims and survivors. We can't deny that. It's, it's possible, we, we could hear arguments about the city council's role. We know that over 50 city councils have banned conversion therapy under their own vested authority. I do encourage each counselor to contact their county board supervisor and ask them to consider the same ban through proposal because of its seriousness. It is, though, less than our role to defer our business to the county. They can ban this, too. We can also pave the way. We ran for this office. We can only determine what happens inside of our boundaries. We can advocate for others to also take action with us. A majority of Douglas County residents do live in Superior. Our state representative went to Madison on our behalf. Their legislative majority is preventing the passing of this meaningful work. We have to try and not mimic that here. We can't stand by and wait for Madison to find their way out of gridlock. We don't wait for them to create awesome work all the time, small business grant programs. They don't regulate our, our streets. They don't tell us where to smoke. We must govern. We do promise a lot in this role. It's rarely to pass the buck. The Williams Institute of the UCLA School of Law estimates that 16,000 LGBT youth will be subjected to conversion therapy before they turn 18. They also estimate that 350,000 LGBT adults have experienced this traumatic conversion practice. Lastly, they also found that bans work. In cities that have already enacted them, 10,000 kids have been spared this experience. We are more than pothole warriors. Compassion and education belong in local politics. A hollow condemnation via resolution is not enough in this case. We don't need highly specialized committee work or department head consultation to do what's right. I have verified there was no committee for RBO or the Panhandlers' Ordinance, and everything was just fine. The ACLU sent us one letter and said the law was wrong, the practice was wrong, and we changed it in one meeting. In April of 2018, Wisconsin, first city passed a similar ban, and there's been no legal complication whatsoever. That was 16 months ago. Aside from that, the Ninth and the Third Courts of Appeal ensure our ability to pass this ban, so does the Supreme Court. There's no sustaining procedural or legal argument. There is no benefit to standing with conversion therapy. There is no middle ground with conversion therapy. What do we have to lose? For those that came, thanks. It takes a lot of courage. I know some of those stories are tough to share, just in order to move the needle on something I think we all agree on up here. City ordinance protects us from abandoned vehicles, lawn grass, and rhinoceros. Now, I don't know what kind of cases we had on file at the time, or what kind of complaints we were getting, but it was serious enough for this body to ban them and put some measure of prevention on the books. We have a good policy in front of us today. It will not cost us a single penny. We will do no harm. There is no conflict. Please find it in your heart. Let's pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Councilor Van Sickle.
First, I just want to thank everyone for coming here and just speaking, speaking from the heart. I really appreciate that, all you guys. Appreciate everyone who sent me emails and, and that's all, but especially you guys that took the time out of your, out of your night to, you had to come and just speak, speak to your situation. I really appreciate that. This is a nasty form of therapy. It's, it's allowed to be done by unlicensed practitioners. It's, in some cases, they use shock therapy, and in all the, all the data that I've been kind of doing these last couple of days, searching, I couldn't find really one single case where it was, if you call it, successful. If anything, it just leads to more, more, more problems. This ordinance sends a good message that we're against this form of therapy. The problem is that that's all it does, is simply send a message. The enforcement piece is problematic, and I don't believe this ordinance has enough teeth in it to stop the therapy if it's happening in the city. I think we'd be doing a disservice to everyone affected by this treatment and everyone who came here to speak tonight if we just passed this ordinance and move on. This ordinance doesn't create a meaningful change that everyone here came tonight asking for. It would be more meaningful coming in a resolution form, or referring it to a body that could do some real enforcement. I'd like to see us tackle this from a broader approach, not only ban this in the city, but the county. So in an effort to gauge the interest in how much of a meaningful change this council wants to make on this issue, I'll make a motion to refer this to the City-County Committee to look, to take a real look at banning this in the entire Douglas County.
So motion by Councilor Van Sickle, and a second by Councilor Dolby, to refer the motion to the City-County, excuse me, to the City-County Committee. Is there discussion on the motion to refer? Councilor Sutherland.
I, again, want to thank everyone for coming here and talking. It's very moving, sweaty palms, getting nervous listening to it all. I'm sorry, some of you went through that. However, I do agree with Councilor Van Sickle, while we're just banning it in this city, this can be practiced in the village of Superior, which is right in South End. It's right there. By going to the county, as we can ask the county to team with us and champion this with us, that's double the people. This Douglas County is about 45,000 people. If we, we're not in a rush for, we are in a rush, don't get me wrong. If we, we're not in a rush for, we are in a rush, don't get me wrong, but I think we could really make a difference if we get the county on board and do a joint effort on this. And thank you all for coming. I appreciate it, and it takes a lot of courage to do that. So, thank you.
Counselor Kern.
I'd like to echo a lot of couple of my colleagues have said. I want to thank each and every one of you that came out today, took your time, the emails, the phone calls. I know a lot of you out there I've spoken to today. I've spent the last probably three days reading about what conversational therapy was, and I'll tell you straight up front, I didn't know what it was. I am mortified about what has happened, the history of it, and how we've gotten here today. I stand with some of the other counselors in wanting to make this even more enacted throughout the county, and if not through the state. I think our state leaders can put a broad overview on it and ban it in the whole entire state.
Nothing is stopping the county if you pass this today. Nothing.
The, the crowd will come to order. The council has the floor. Counselor Kern.
The council should be ashamed.
I'm only going to warn you one more time, sir, before I let the chief move.
You should be ashamed of yourselves.
Chief Alexander.
There is nothing stopping the county or the state from taking action on this just because you do today. You stand there and look at me, I talked to all three of you, and you look at me and pretend as though you, you are my friends. Shame on you. Shame on you.
Counselor Kern has the floor.
But I, I look forward to working with all those bodies to make this happen and ban this and put stricter fines and penalties and things that we can truthfully stick our teeth into and make it so it never happens in our community again.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Counselor Olson.
With what just happened, I, I apologize to the people that have so much passion for this, and hopefully we can move on here. I want to, myself, under full disclosure, do not agree with this therapy by any means, any way, any shape, any form. I also want to let you know that I have a gay nephew and a black niece. So I understand all this to some degree. I don't understand the, the point that the information I got, I don't understand it at all. I don't understand it one bit. I haven't been in the situation where it's affected me, but it could have because my sister may not have told me that. In the ordinance, the only problem I have with it is that in the enforcement, it says that this will be complaint-driven, no investigations will launch or activate with the ordinance's passing. Those in violation of the ordinance will be subject to applicable fines and referred to the Department of Safety and Professional Services, which I don't even know where it exists. Nobody seems to know about it. Or the fact that they regular, they regulate therapy service and professional counseling. On the other hand, I can't sit here and watch this happen. I just can't do it. I'm a Catholic person. I believe in God. And I think everybody in this room has the same feelings that a lot of people expressed. What I would like to see, myself, in my own selfish way, we do this. We pass this ordinance. But Mr. Liebert, I'm going to be at your door. Mr. Milroy, I'm going to be at your door, and I'm going to ask you to carry this further. And Christina, in your professional arena, I'll be asking the Board of Education to look in this. And I would be asking that the city council and everybody involved in this make sure that we look at everything else, including the opiates and every other crisis that we face every single day in this community. But this is not just a city of Superior issue. I was born and raised in the Village, so I know what Sutherland's talking about. But the issue also exists in Oliver, in the town of Superior, in the town of Oakland, the town of Lakeside, town of Poplar, town of Parkland, right? So let's make sure when we do this that we do it complete. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you. I was also in the group of never having heard of this. I will admit to that. I've tried to bring myself up to speed. It seems absolutely repulsive to me. I feel sorry for the people who've gone through this, and I thank the people for coming forward tonight. But I think it's our responsibility to do due diligence. The fellow councilor said, see where the county is. We must work together on this. I think we can strengthen it. If we pass something tonight and don't, don't do anything else, wherever will we be? We'll be, it'll be words on a piece of paper. That's all it'll be. We won't, nothing will happen. We'll, we'll move on. You won't be here at every city council meeting. We have a responsibility now that we know this problem exists to work on it, to do our due diligence, to work with the county, and create something that all you would be proud of. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Counselor Dahlbeck.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, come from a family of gay men, and I'm a hundred percent against this conversion therapy. But I, too, am ignorant as to what it's all about. I was wondering, is there an epidemic going on? Are we seeing hundreds of children being forced into therapy? I don't know. This is why I would like to see us go into session and find out more about it, because I'm ignorant when it comes to what's going on. We loved our gay nephew and cousin and uncle, and we never had a problem, right from the get-go. They were our family, and we just loved them. We never thought of trying to make them go any other way. So my, I, I'm for having the county, too, go with, with us. Thank you.
Counselor Ludwick.
It sounds to me like it's let's kick the can down the road lip service. Why don't we, as the city council, be leaders and pass this ordinance and then say, county, come on board with us? We know that ordinance can always be changed, and so for you to say it is not complete, it is, I'm sorry, Mayor Payne, it is BS. Let's pass this ordinance, and if it's not good enough, we change it in the future. We have changed ordinances in the past.
Further discussion. Counselor Bender. I'm going to put my microphone here.
Okay. And first of all, my phone is about to die, so if I, if, if I go dead, you'll know why. But this is the right thing to do. We need to pass this, and we need, we need to do so now.
Thank you, Counselor. The motion is to refer to the city-county committee. Yes, refers the ordinance for discussion at the city-county committee. No, continues discussion on the main motion. Proceed by roll call.
Counselor Dahlbeck. Counselor Olson.
No.
Counselor Van Sickle. Counselor Bender.
Please explain again if you vote no.
If you vote no, we continue and move to attempt to pass this tonight, Counselor.
Counselor Sweeney. Counselor Fennessey. Counselor Elm.
No.
Counselor Ludwick. Counselor Sutherland. Counselor Kern.
The vote is five-five. The chair votes in the negative, and the motion fails. The main motion, whether or not to enact the ordinance, is before the council. There's a discussion on the motion. Counselor Fennessey.
Well, let's do it. Let's, let's pass it. I thought, I thought we could, you know, do a, do a joint effort with the, with the county and, you know, make some, make a bigger impact, but if, if, if the body, if this body wants to just focus in on, on us right now, let's, let's pass it.
Counselor Sutherland.
Oh, sorry. So, all right. I agree. If we're not going to go to the county with this, let's pass it as an ordinance. But Mr. Liebert, and Mil, Representative Milroy, something you got to pass in the state and keep hustling.
Counselor, I've let this go, but you're-
No, I'm not. I'm just saying, we're up here and you're calling this out. I'm going to ask you guys to work on the same thing.
Counselor, you're required to address the chair. Please. Counselor Kern.
I agree. I was hoping for a more comprehensive discussion about this, but obviously that motion failed, so let's support it.
Is there further discussion? I'm going to proceed by voice vote. All those in favor of passing this ordinance, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion is unanimous and carries. You can clap now. We do have one final piece of business. Counselors.
Item twelve point two is an ordinance introduced by Police Chief Alexander, amending Chapter ninety of the Parks and Recreation Chapter, Article seven, motorized recreational vehicles. Section ninety dash thirty-one, adding maximum speed limit on the Osagee Trail between Thirty-First Avenue East and Moccasin Mike Road to ten miles per hour.
No motions by Counselor Elm, and second by Counselor Dahlbeck. Is there discussion? See none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have no further business, and are adjourned, Counselors. Thank you.